Did you just fucking say that? Like I was a dog like yeah.
Oh my god.
Oh, people love dashboard, I never knew that link existed.
Rip.
It's all good.
No, that's fucked.
We chill. Study sessions, study with. No, two point five.
Try this again. Put a piece of duct tape around my face. Stuff it all sock in my mouth.
Nope, we all get bam, two, this is number two point five.
God. So freaking dumb. What else could I expose you for right now?
Exposed.
I'm sorry. I'm so sorry.
All I can think of is like nakedness and like.
Don't worry fam, later I'll be posting some nudies.
I went to the show club with some friends for like an event or whatever and then. And he went to that new place I've never been to and I was like, oh, any hotties there? He's like, actually, yes. At the new place?
Any hogs?
Any hotties there? It's like any hotties at the new place that haven't been there? And then he was like, yeah, 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 she was like rocking but 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 she had like pancake nipples and those kind of huge trampy and I was like damn it. It's like she had it so close, it's like exposed, pancake nipples.
She's a stranger. Do you guys know Kenzie has pancake nipples?
Oh, exposed. In a probes.
Yeah, no. Stream is still going boo.
I had to restart because Alexa exposed me.
I'm so sorry.
Did you do that thing and order it? I did do the thing.
What time does it say we have to study quick before it gets here? Study stream two point oh.
It's coming here in twenty minutes.
Oh, fuck that's fast. I guess we're starting a new twenty minute timer.
Alexa, start a timer. You unplugged her.
I unplugged her.
I unplugged her.
Is she out there? Out there she's talking. Is she out there? Out there she's talking.
Did you hear her out there? Did you hear her out there?
Did you hear her out there? Did you hear her out there?
No, I heard a cat meowing though weirdly, just kidding. No, I heard a cat meowing though weirdly, just kidding. No, I heard a cat meowing though weirdly, just kidding. No, I heard a cat meowing though weirdly, just kidding.
Alexa, start a timer for twenty minutes. 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 Alexa, volume ten. 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 Fine. 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 Alexa, how much time is left on the timer? Alexa, how much time is left on the timer? Alexa, how much time is left on the timer? Alexa, how much time is left on the timer?
You have nineteen left on the twenty. We already wasted a minute asking her what time it was and if she could. We already wasted a minute asking her what time it was and if she could. We already wasted a minute asking her what time it was and if she could. We already wasted a minute asking her what time it was and if she could.
Alexa, add one minute to the timer. Alexa, add one minute to the timer. Alexa, add one minute to the timer. Alexa, add one minute to the timer.
Hunter, hi there, so glad you're doing the series. I graduated high school last week and I'm glad I'll have people to study with in college. Hunter, hi there, so glad you're doing the series. I graduated high school last week and I'm glad I'll have people to study with in college. Hunter, hi there, so glad you're doing the series. I graduated high school last week and I'm glad I'll have people to study with in college. Hunter, hi there, so glad you're doing the series. I graduated high school last week and I'm glad I'll have people to study with in college. You are the people. You are the people. You are the people. You are the people. To study with. To study with. To study with. To study with. Does anyone else who would like to participate in our study stream? Does anyone else who would like to participate in our study stream? Does anyone else who would like to participate in our study stream? Does anyone else who would like to participate in our study stream? Clearly just because she just talked to me. Clearly just because she just talked to me. Clearly just because she just talked to me. Clearly just because she just talked to me.
Yeah, look at Ken there over there studying dentist stuff. Yeah, look at Ken there over there studying dentist stuff. Yeah, look at Ken there over there studying dentist stuff. Yeah, look at Ken there over there studying dentist stuff.
They actually really cut me up. That actually really cut me up. That actually really cut me up. That actually really cut me up.
Alright, twenty minutes on the clock. 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 Ready, set. Ready, set. Ready, set. Ready, set.
I have to get to the page, I have to reset the time. I have to get to the page, I have to reset the time. I have to get to the page, I have to reset the time. I have to get to the page, I have to reset the time. And so it begins. And so it begins. And so it begins. And so it begins. Oh wait, I hit start and it didn't start. Oh wait, I hit start and it didn't start. Oh wait, I hit start and it didn't start. Oh wait, I hit start and it didn't start. It's kinda cool. It's kinda cool. It's kinda cool. It's kinda cool. Except that it's not working. 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 I made a nice tweet for you Alexa, you'll love it. Thanks, Gingo. I made a nice tweet for you Alexa, you'll love it. Thanks, Gingo. I made a nice tweet for you Alexa, you'll love it. Thanks, Gingo. I made a nice tweet for you Alexa, you'll love it. Thanks, Gingo. Okay, I'm not paying attention anymore. Okay, I'm not paying attention anymore. Okay, I'm not paying attention anymore. Okay, I'm not paying attention anymore.
Oh, great. I've been sitting like this for ten minutes. Oh, great. I've been sitting like this for ten minutes. Oh, great. I've been sitting like this for ten minutes. Oh, great. I've been sitting like this for ten minutes.
You got me looking. You got me looking. You got me looking. You got me looking. He's gonna caption it, I needed a place for my boobs to rest. He's gonna caption it, I needed a place for my boobs to rest. He's gonna caption it, I needed a place for my boobs to rest. He's gonna caption it, I needed a place for my boobs to rest.
Yeah, great, okay. I just need to stay like totally still like that. Yeah, great, okay. I just need to stay like totally still like that. Yeah, great, okay. I just need to stay like totally still like that. Yeah, great, okay. I just need to stay like totally still like that.
Yeah, you're right, that's attractive. Yeah, you're right, that's attractive. Yeah, you're right, that's attractive. Yeah, you're right, that's attractive.
Well, the point is it to be attractive, it's to be like less unattractive. Well, the point is it to be attractive, it's to be like less unattractive. Well, the point is it to be attractive, it's to be like less unattractive. Well, the point is it to be attractive, it's to be like less unattractive.
I'm just not shooting super high, are you? I'm just not shooting super high, are you? I'm just not shooting super high, are you? I'm just not shooting super high, are you?
Low, got low levels here. Low, got low levels here. Low, got low levels here. Low, got low levels here.
Where?
There she goes. Thanks. Alexa, off. Alexa, stop. Alexa, stop.
A little more sorry. Deeper, harsher tone.
Deeper tones.
Oh, this timer still has six seconds. Ken's cheats at games, ask Cory. What's with the timer, is it a bomb?
Oh my gosh.
Does Cory have a YouTube channel? Yes, she does. Wants to bring me down. Alexa, shut the fuck up, please.
Which one are you talking to, Gingo? I changed the go word to be mark, I mean not mark, break.
Oh, nice. Working against me.
Alright, what's this tweet we're talking about?
You're trolling me so hard.
Go off, girl. Why? Why did you have to do that? Oh, it gets better.
Does it?
What the hell?
That's fantastic, Gingo, I'm stoked.
That's so stupid.
Glad to be back on YouTube, I've been so busy with school, when I'm back with more free time. Thanks, Hunter, yeah, we're doing study sessions, two to three times a week now, we're starting. She's having. That's so great.
That bitch looks thirsty. You suck.
You, you just suck.
Oh, you like that?
Of course I did.
You had to like that?
I'm gonna like it and then I'm gonna go ahead and steal both photos.
You're just glad that he didn't do it to you.
He's done it to me a thousand times, his old hat.
Stupid chords sucks, I need to buy new chords.
Well, twice as much, it ain't twice as good. Dream away, just throw it all away. Stay the hell away from me. Gabe, hello. What does the profile look like? What profile? It's a weird shadow, your face looks kinda green right now.
Look at this. You wanna buy some of that?
I wanna just see what it said, her panties read scandalous and I was curious.
You gotta get a closer look. You're just like perusing Jake Paul's Twitter.
Yeah.
Shame, shame in that direction.
Collaborative with Tana lately and it's funny. Um, Tana, sorry, I did think. Search Strikadonia. Alexa, what are you studying?
Science.
Specifics you're gonna get?
Science review, to take the DAT.
She just finished an okem class, got a ninety percent.
I finished the damn class with ninety eight point six percent. A plus.
And. Now she's finishing up ten, um, like practice tests. Uh, for the DAT. And by like the study. Hi, Milky Way. Are you still looking at this photo?
I just tagged Gingo in there, so she can see it too, cause he said Tana's cute. Thank you.
That's not a cute pic, that's like a sexy pic.
You're welcome, Gingo, it's a sex pic.
Like, she's so cute, like.
Cute. She's cute, like you tag a picture of her literal crotch, cool, 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 cool. Wants to bring me down.
Great pick, you caught Alexa in all her glory.
That's the dumbest thing I've ever heard. I think it's great. Like, why? Why did I have to?
The dumbest thing you've ever heard, huh?
No, the dumbest way I've ever looked.
You said that's the dumbest thing I've ever heard. But I'm gonna play something better.
Setting me up for something? I mean, setting me up for something? Wants to bring me down. Hope, gotta go outside and get my burritos.
Good, you won't get to hear this.
Oh, I wanna hear it. MRG, take out your earbuds. What does what mean?
You can't find Cory on YouTube. Yeah, just type Strike it down here. And she's right there. Wants to bring me down. She's really changed the thumbnail on that first pic. Yeah, she's easily found. I don't know why you can't find her. Are you guys friends or what? We are sisters. Me and Cory? Cory and I are friends.
Yes, headphone users just died.
Oh, I just saw his car. Okay, you a headphone C I V. Wants to bring me down. Oh, twice as much. Pain twice as good. Can't sustain. Wow, this is a Pendleton Wolfmail notebook. Dream of ways to blow it all away. Are you meeting a stranger for food, Alexa? Sounds great. GG. Try not to sound too surprised. Yeah, I found Cory's channel, no problem. In fact, I just subscribed.
He said they had the order to go for him to pick up with one item inside. And he went back and was like, this isn't right.
Did you bring it in?
Yeah, I sat in the kitchen.
Oh, we're not gonna eat while we talk and okay.
You wanna?
I don't really do. I don't really joke about mukbang and then don't ever do it. Is it Striking Down Your Rest Fever Flow? No, it's just Strike it down, yeah. You put your job on. What's going on? Too much lean? Swish this place eggs. Like, she just says it so like stutteringly, which is part of what makes it super duper funny for me. Wants to bring me down.
Hey, they still have.
I'm telling you, that's fine. I subscribed to her channel on Twitch yesterday.
They still have party.
I think there's a different party.
Free delivery.
Well, yeah, but on what though?
Same things.
Oh, those bullshit bitches. They just got paid for a promo for free delivery. Well, free delivery is free delivery. Why am I?
Yeah, I don't care. I'm not mad about it.
Wait a second. I don't give a shit. Oh, goodbye.
What's poppin'? Yeah. So good. I just can't get enough of it.
Wants to bring me down. Oh, it's twice as nice.
She put an X over my face and say canceled.
Alexa is canceled and we use that photo as the thumbnail.
Oh, no. That's my payback for exposure. I uploaded a video yesterday and only has six views. Is it any good? If so, I'll go watch it. But I, can you tell me what it's about right now though?
Milky Way right now.
I quit my job today. What the hell? What happened?
I know. I asked Oz about that. I do have a Discord contact, contact me, but um, it's linked through my Twitch. I need to be a subscriber. Why can't we build a space elevator?
Well, haven't she doesn't have much content.
This star. Trying to watch Milky Way's space elevator video. I'm worried that's gonna like submerge into porn halfway through. We're gonna turn the audio off only, only for my eyes.
What about my eyes? I mean, is this a science video?
I'm not quite sure. Watch it.
Dollars per KG against twenty thousand dollars per kg.
Oh, I don't think I understand it. Why not?
A coarse reduction of around ninety nine. Similarly, space elevator also does not.
Oh, it isn't porn.
Need enormous speed of forty thousand kilometers per hour to escape the gravity of earth and not to fall back. Using space elevator, we can go slowly and easily.
Yes, we're live, Tommy. You know what? I think you have a good question.
I think.
That's a great question.
Yeah, I think I'd, I'll watch that later.
I don't know why we can't build a space elevator. I bet we could.
Well, you just got one more review.
I'm gonna go look at Gingo's channel and comment something shitty on one of his videos.
Yeah, me too. I'm gonna click over here. How come I can't click on him? I'm gonna report his channel. I'm sorry, I'm not.
I'm gonna just subscribe.
No content.
Damn it. Upload a cat video or something. I just subscribed. That's me.
Oh, yeah. Kenzie's number one fan.
Why is your voice quiet and then blasted on the computer? Cause we're just using the microphone right? Are you laughing loudly just to piss her off?
I didn't know it was Katie. That's funny. You are watching it, my voice.
Holy dead.
Yeah, we saw it Milky Way. We watched a little, a little clip of it.
I'm gonna report his channel.
To get a good idea, but.
Wave if this is live. Oh, was that not a high five?
We're not live. It was a high five.
It was a high five, we're done. You whores.
He's like, damn it.
Take your shirt off if it's, if it's live. Did you see him wave? Tommy, did you see him waving? Hooked Dragon's waving too.
Take your pants off if this is live.
Show me your pancakes if this is live.
Show me your pancakes. Sick. Sick bro, sick.
Quality content.
Quality studies.
Quality study times.
And I answered why I quit. Okay, sorry, I missed it.
I quit my job today. No, it's dead. I got my music playlist on my channel and I answered by quit. I didn't see that you did at all. It says right here, yeah, get your burritos, Alexa. And then it says Milky Way. I'm not sure. I think you're, it says, right here, it says, I quit my job today, sad face. And then right below that, your next comment is, no, it's dead. And then below that, you're, you said, is your, is your music playlist like? Saying why you quit? Is it like a playlist to like the boss or something like, like I'm confused.
Are we supposed to go to your channel and look at your playlist?
At your playlist? Is that what I have to do?
Oz is higher than the.
The cloud. On that lean.
On that lean.
I think that it's a heart shaped box. Ear fucker. Wait, no, five days ago. Let me get it. Oh. Ear fucker? Wait, a music playlist on my channel. Saved playlist. Epic rap battles of history reactions. Ladies of rap. Epic rap battles of history. You a big fan of the epic rap?
Big fan of the rap, boy.
Smash that bass over your head if this is live.
I don't wanna.
It was not like a fake bass to do.
A sugar bass?
Yeah. Come back, welcome back MRG.
Oh my gosh. No, my music list is so fun. Well, what's the reason you quit your job then?
We must have missed it Oz. I'm really sorry.
Spill it.
All them nasty beans.
He played into his rap battle. Play them nasty beans. Say what?
Alexa's gonna report my YouTube channel. Thank God.
You gotta post some videos already. There's nothing to judge on there. Tell me the main things that I need to improve. Well, I just saw a clip of it so far, um. It's, it sounded like a, um, educational video about space technology. Which is not something I know a lot about, so I think it'd be hard for me to tell you how to improve it, if I'm being honest.
I don't, I, he got here in twenty minutes. There's no way that he like left with one food item and went back. He definitely just said that to get a bigger tip. Oh, I made sure they didn't screw you over.
Well, I tipped him forty percent, so.
And like, well, he played you. This is great. Look at this chicken. Oh, just real flow pen stuff. On your own channel? Alright. You can react to my YouTube videos if you want.
Ooh, that's such a good idea.
MRG, what YouTube videos do you have?
How are you finding this?
You click on their name. Oh, I'm sorry. You go into the chat on the right side. There's three dots.
Oh, okay. Where am I?
Monster Hunter world.
Did you make this?
Looks like I did. Just some old gameplay stuff.
Did you show him your boobs as a tip?
No, I did not. Improving about my voice being a sound. Oh, I bet you did good Milky Way. You had a good layout.
Is this Monster Hunter? Okay.
You follow around fireflies and you carry a giant hammer with you.
Love that.
And kill dinosaurs. Oz, I'm really sorry. We did miss your, your answer to that. We're watching the one titled, It Didn't Stand a Chance. Riveting gameplay, by the way. I'm missing it. It's like a typical monster vibe on Monster Hunter. It's a black diablos. I can tell by the front. Um. It is a black diablos. Y'all have Snapchat. No, I don't have Snapchat. Oh, there's a lot of veggies on it. It's like tomatoes and onions. A discount for boob shine.
I'm gonna go pull some candy crush for a bit, yeah?
You know, the worst thing I ever uploaded to my YouTube was some old Overwatch plays. Planet side two. What were you doing over there? On the other side of the planet. No, it's weird that, oh, share factory. Are you playing a bunch of music through this? I can mute it. But now I don't wanna watch it on loud, cause. I haven't, Hunter. Not Lucio later game. I don't even remember it. Let's go watch it. They don't play new stuff. It doesn't offend me. I just don't like to Snapchat. Oh, livestream, damn it. Playing now? Playing what? Oh, yeah, yeah. Everybody, everybody loves that game right now. I hear only good things about it. Yeah, let's get to the end here. Oh, you can't see my thing. Your information, Gingo. I downloaded Rage yesterday, cause I was gonna stream it on Twitch, but now I'm not. Got him. Oh, I forgot about all that Fallout seventy six content. Lucio. Yeah. Hey, Talon. I bought it for myself. Nice try though. Waiting at your back door all this time. How could you not know, baby? You belong with me. I'm good. Alexa, this is a short distracted study sesh today. Yeah, you should feel ashamed. Where's my play of the game at? Was that the very end? Darn it. Why does it always recommend my hoys and glazed meatballs? Is it the only thing that ever gets recommended anymore? I'm trying to watch an old ass video and it makes me click on hoys and glazed meatballs. Like, this is not a safe space. I'm gonna scroll along as way. Baha, found it. Two down likes. Who down likes that? Douches. Just two environmental. That's hilarious. That's super funny. Yeah, I know, right? I didn't even know you uploaded stuff, MRG. That's so rude, Gingo. That affects my analytics. Give me a change that. Oh shit, sorry Hunter. When I dropped my entire sandwich on the ground. Waiting at your back door all this time. How could you not know, baby? Yeah, alright. Gotta keep things balanced. On my little baby YouTube. Suppley chicken bowl. Has corn. Onions, tomatoes, black beans, rice. Chicken. Your safe space died with this sandwich. That's funny. I'm so sorry about your sandwich. Well, we're all gonna take a minute and mourn it's. It's demise. Upgraded my PS four from HD to SD. Lost all my clips. Bummer. Let's see. I think I could throw some guacamole. Funeral invitation for my sandwich will be tomorrow. Oh, my God Hunter. Okay, you're hilarious. He would have wanted to open casket. Normally a, a dangerous accident. You do close caskets. You don't have to see their innards. Well, I'm probably gonna close down the YouTube stream. Thanks for hanging out on our study session. I will not be streaming tomorrow at all. But I am planning on streaming Friday. Thanks for hanging out while we got some studying done. I'm gonna get straight A's this term. I was kinda having fun. I enjoy the study streams. Thanks for hanging out you guys. Take care. I'll see you Friday. With the drink.